This meeting is called to order in accordance with the Open Public Meeting Act. This meeting was included in a list of meeting dates sent to the Home News Tribune, The Star Ledger, and the Highland Park Planet on January 7th, 2016, and was posted on the bulletin board of Borough Hall 221 South Fifth Avenue on January 7th, 2016, and has remained continuously posted as required by law. Fire exits are to my left and to my right. Speak into the microphones when you come up, please, and assistive listening devices are available. Mr. Williams, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please? Roll call, please. Oh, Pledge of Allegiance, we did. Roll call, please. Mayor Burt Midler?
Here.
Councilwoman Erickson?
Here.
Councilwoman Fine?
Here.
Councilwoman Foster Dublin?
Councilwoman George?
Here.
Councilwoman Walsh?
Here.
Councilwoman Wilkowitz?
Here.
Borough Administrator Kovak?
Borough Attorney Schmier?
Here.
A couple of weeks ago, we had the honor of honoring our volunteers here in Highland Park. And at that time, we awarded our Volunteer of the Year Award to Mr. Alan Williams. Alan has served on our Environmental Commission and our Sustainable Committee for many years now, and he's been an invaluable resource to all of us here in Highland Park. And Alan, at this time, I would like it if you could come forward. On behalf of everyone on the Borough Council, and myself, and our administration, I want to thank you for so many years of service. Alan, you're a treasure here in Highland Park. This week, many of us will be observing our Yom Hashoah in many different ways. Sometimes you live in a town with someone you see every single day of your life, and you don't really know about them. More than 900 Jews fleeing Nazi Germany sailed with the SS St. Louis to what they hoped would be a safe haven in Cuba. After being turned away from Cuba and the United States, the refugees were finally able to dock in Belgium. However, more than 250 of them were killed as the Nazis swept across Europe. Highland Park's very own resident, Mrs. Ruth Burkhardt, was a child on the SS St. Louis. Tonight, we honor her here for what she lived through, and most importantly, for what she means to us here in Highland Park. Today, I have a proclamation that I want to read to you, Ms. Burkhardt. Why don't you come up here with me? Whereas, pursuant to an act of Congress, the United States Holocaust Memorial Council has designated these dates as Days of Remembrance of the Victims of the Holocaust. And whereas, the history of the Holocaust provides the opportunity to reflect on the moral responsibilities of individuals, societies, and governments, and their efforts to overcome prejudice through education and reflection. And whereas, with sadness, we remember the victims; with admiration, we remember the resistors and rescuers; and with respect, we remember the survivors who were sheltered, escaped, or freed, and who lived to contribute so much to our community and our world. And whereas, we have an obligation to ensure that the memory and legacy of lives lost are forever changed in this horrific event are never forgotten. And whereas Ruth Burkhardt was a child that set sail on the SS St. Louis with German refugees escaping Nazism in 1939, the ship was turned away by several countries in the Americas refusing to give the refugees entry before returning to Europe and finally docking in Belgium. And whereas Ruth Burkhardt did finally get to the United States, living in New Brunswick, before moving to Highland Park in 2003. And whereas Ruth Burkhardt is very active in the community, she regularly walks around the streets of Highland Park and frequently attends Borough Council meetings, where she brings important issues to the governing body's attention. And whereas Ruth Burkhardt, as part of the Safe Walking and Cycling Committee, was instrumental in bicycle helmet education for cyclists and for the creation of educational flyers, she also serves on the Highland Park Juvenile Conference Committee. And whereas, the Borough and residents of Highland Park wish to honor Ruth Burkhardt for her long history of contributions to Highland Park, now therefore I, Galbraith Midler, Mayor of the Borough of Highland Park, do hereby declare this date as Yom Hashoah Remembrance Day in our community, and be it further resolved that we pledge today to firmly commit ourselves to say "never again" and to work to promote human dignity by confronting intolerance and hate whenever and wherever it exists. In witness hereof, I sign my name. Thank you, Mrs. Burkhardt. Okay, we'll come back to you in 20 minutes? Okay. So...
Thank you. That's the honor. I don't believe they got lots of pictures of me, but London Mayor.
Okay, we will come back to Mrs. Burkhardt, who's going to be talking with us about her experiences, her life, and what it is like here in Highland Park. Okay, Council report. Let's start down this end with Councilman Walsh.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This will be the final reminder that everybody will receive about camp jobs this summer, because the applications have to be turned in by May 13th. You can pick them up and return them at the Senior Center. The Memorial Day Parade is set to begin in New Brunswick at Monmouth Square on May 30th at 11:00 a.m., and we'll march through to the Doughboy here in Highland Park. There'll also be a short ceremony honoring our veterans during the day. Fireworks will be happening Sunday, July 30th at 5:00 p.m. with a rain date of July 10th. We have music and activities and vendors. We're also looking for volunteers to help with the event, specifically to help collect donations for the Mayor's Give a Hoot program. If you are able to help out for an hour or two, please email me at jimwalshhp@gmail.com to let me know your availability. We're also going to have a special Mother's Day senior luncheon this year that all moms and their families are invited to attend on Monday, May 9th, immediately following the Monday after Mother's Day at 12:00 noon. Food catered by the Highland Park's Pathari Tavern will be served. There'll be a musical show entitled "The Touch of Sinatra," and there'll be a special program after the luncheon that will include planting and a fun project where you'll learn about how to plant flowers and herbs, and then also some information about summer safety during the summer. The Atlantic City trip will be happening on May 24th at 8:30. We'll be leaving here, the Borough, at 8:30 and arriving back at 6:30 p.m. The cost is $40 per person, but everyone who goes will get $30 back in slot options when they get back to Atlantic City. And then we also have coming up the annual senior prom, which is happening a little over a month, on Tuesday, June 14th, from 5:00 to 8:00 p.m. Attendees will have a dinner, dancing, and a vote on the 2016 King and Queen. And this is the senior prom, not for the high school, but for our Borough senior citizens. But welcome everybody to come to that. We're very excited to welcome a new staff person in the Borough. We have a new driver, Lawrence Patterson, started on April 20th, is driving our medical van and helping seniors get around, which is really a great service to a lot of our seniors, helping them get to and from medical visits on a consistent basis. And then we also are going to be, a number of our seniors are going to be attending this year's Middlesex County Nineties Birthday Bash, which is going to celebrate seniors. We actually have 18 of them in Highland Park over the age of 90 who we believe will be attending the Bash. And then finally, the Senior Center is also offering a trip to Ocean City, Maryland this year in the fall, September 12th through the 15th. The trip is open to all Borough residents. The cost is $400. You get a motor trip, transportation down to Ocean City, three nights of hotels, breakfast, and two dinners, including an all-you-can-eat seafood buffet. There'll be guided tours and trips to casinos and much more. As I said before, this is open to all Highland Park residents. It's a great trip. It only costs $400. Please stop by the Senior Center for more information. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Walsh. Councilman George?
Thank you, Mayor. Before I give my report, though, I'd also like to congratulate Alan Williams, his Volunteer of the Year. He also does work for the Lower Raritan Watershed Partnership. I sit with him on Planning Board and have dealt with him for a long time, even before I was on Council. Congratulations. With regard to the Arts Committee and the Arts Center, Mayor, Councilman Walsh and I had a meeting to coordinate the work of the two groups and also to kind of sharpen the vision a little bit and work with the Redevelopment Agency on moving that project forward. With regard to Main Street Highland Park, we renamed the street fair, unfortunately, the River Fest on Sunday, as you all know. But from my information from talking with the Executive Director and the board members and the other staff members, the 5K run was actually very well attended. There are photographs available. I think they'll be, should be, up online. We had a very large crowd, and everyone from toddlers right on up to the seasoned 500 and 700 level runners were in attendance. We had a number of vendors and canceled out, unfortunately, because of the rain. The first three hours were just pouring. A number of us were there on the street and was helping to set up. But the rain seemed to let up a little bit, and we started to get some foot traffic around 1:30, 2 o'clock. So hopefully, we, I guess we need to pray for less rain for next year, but everything that did happen went out without a hitch. All of our public services were there and manned, and as far as organization went, Main Street did a great job, even despite all the terrible weather. With regard to the Redevelopment Agency, the meeting is Thursday night. We'll be continuing the discussion of refining the downtown redevelopment area. There are some current plans under discussion, again, moving in conjunction with a number of other agencies for the Arts Center. That's under discussion. There is growing interest in that project as well. The Redevelopment Agency is making recommendations and discussing, not necessarily amendments, but supplements to the Redevelopment Act, which would make the area a little bit more developable and which would augment the present plan that we have in place. The zoning board has been relatively light. The last meeting in April was canceled simply because there's no applications, but they are organized and they have been hearing several applications which allow some reuse and repurposing of the residences to bring them up to date. We've had those discussions in the past. The Planning Board, as I mentioned last time, the large hearing on the American Properties was concluded. A resolution was passed as a result of discussions and negotiations. Most of the conditions that the Planning Board and administration were concerned about have been met and satisfied. Again, Volunteer of the Year, Mr. Williams, actually spearheaded that subgroup, and they did very well. As I mentioned last time, Chief, one of the conditions of both Honeywell, who was starting the site work, as well as American Properties, was to meet with the Police Department and this time, develop a coherent construction traffic management plan, and they committed to do that before the work starts, not after it's done. Finally, the parking group there, I'm sending out the emails to coordinate. There's, as usual, disparate group between administration and Borough personnel and the volunteers. It's going to be a bit of a challenge to coordinate that, but everybody's on board. The approximate 250-page primer that Jeff Perlman and I have assembled is under construction and being donated by me and my law firm to get that done. Will also be an email to everyone, and I'm going to try and figure out a way to make it available online for residents to read. It's a primer that talks about parking. We've even found articles from the 1960s about residential parking problems and how they relate to downtown. We've also pulled not just success stories, but failure stories, so what we can study and stimulate our discussion. Finally, as I always say, I see a number of people here tonight, I guess people are finally listening, come out to the meetings and see the nuts and bolts of your town getting made. But don't just come here, come to Redevelopment Agency, come to the Zoning Board, come to the Planning Board, come to Main Street's open meetings, and see how the work of what we're all talking about gets done, in addition to all the other board meetings that are doing so much. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Yes?
The Finance Committee has no report.
No report. Okay, Councilman Fine?
Sure, thank you, Madam Mayor. On Tuesday, April 5th, 2016, the Borough of Highland Park was designated as New Jersey's first heart-safe municipality. Last night, the Mayor, Council, and Mayor's Wellness Campaign celebrated this new designation and the enhancements to our community preparedness through an educational event here at Borough Hall. I want to thank Dr. Clifton Lacy, the Mayor's Wellness Campaign Chair, members of the Mayor's Wellness Campaign, our automated external defibrillator donors, and Assemblywoman Nancy Pinkin and Senator Joe Vitale for participating in this special event. Matt Hirsch is leading the Health and Human Services Committee's Municipal ID Card Program Initiative, and under his leadership, we will continue to work with the New Jersey Alliance for Immigrant Justice to hopefully bring this important program to fruition in our Borough by the end of 2016. In regard to human relations, community efforts, I want to thank Bardell Elementary School teachers Daniel Leeper, Tracy Maiden, and Bardell Principal Anthony Benjamin, and our Peshawah Raymond Yeshiva's Ilana Bohm, and Director of General Studies Chaya Friedman, for organizing the Second Annual Joint Environmental Program for second-grade students in both schools. The program will include Raritan River Keeper Bill Schultz, teaching the students about the history of the Raritan River, and the second-grade students will have an opportunity to explore the geography of where the Raritan River flows, understand the effects of littering into the Raritan River, and how it affects all the people who live along it, and work collaboratively with the group to create a poster to promote awareness for keeping the Raritan River clean. The Raritan River Keeper's presentation will be this Friday, May 6th, at 12:30 p.m. in the Bardell School Auditorium. The Donaldson Park Field Trip Scavenger Hunt will be on Friday, May 13th. This collaborative program will once again serve to promote environmental education and community building in our Borough. On tonight's Consent Agenda is a resolution declaring June 2nd to be National Gun Violence Awareness Day. I encourage all HP residents to join this campaign by pledging to wear orange on June 2nd to help raise awareness about gun violence and honor the lives and lost human potential of Americans stolen by gun violence. Finally, this Thursday night, May 5th, the Highland Park Health and Human Services Committee will be meeting at 6:30 p.m. in the Berman Conference Room here at Borough Hall. The three items on the agenda are the proposed e-cigarette license ordinance and fee, advocating for an inclusive playground in our Borough, and the possible development of a Highland Park community food pantry garden. Thank you.
Thank you. Council President Wilkowitz, do you have a report?
Thank you, Mayor. I would also like to thank Alan Williams. I'm the council liaison to Highland Park's Active Environmental Commission and Sustainable Highland Park, and Alan sits on both, in fact, co-chairing the Environmental Commission. Every proposal or plan that is submitted to our Planning Board and every environmental report that comes to the Borough of Highland Park is scrutinized by Alan. So thank you for all of your work. It's a tremendous amount of work, too, by the way. And I'd like to thank Main Street and everyone who participated in the 5K, the kids' races, and our street fair this past weekend. It was a wet one, but not a total washout. Thanks, of course, to Public Works and for our first responders who were on hand often behind the scenes to help make it happen. Highland Park's annual spring tree planting is underway this week. You may have seen them out and about. Our Public Works has prepped the areas to be planted, and we have the New Jersey Tree Foundation, with whom we've contracted, to deliver and plant 28 Borough street trees. We hold two plantings a year, another one will be held in the fall. The Borough, through our Shade Tree Advisory Committee, co-chaired by Carol Avilsgard and Karen Swain, is committed to enhancing the environmental health and enrich the appearance of our town by planting appropriate shade trees along our streets and in public spaces. Trees help conserve energy by blocking winter winds and shading summer sun. Trees reduce noise pollution, and they produce the oxygen we breathe. They also add value to our real estate. If you're interested in having the Borough plant a tree on the right-of-way near your property, please complete a tree request form from the website or at our clerk's desk. A list of species is also on the website. Earlier this afternoon, I participated in a school walkability analysis. Three groups of people made up of teachers, administration, and staff from the schools in the Borough, including Code and Police Department, plus resident and student volunteers, walked around Irving School, Bardell, and the middle school to help analyze the walkability of the neighborhoods around the schools. The study is being run through Keep Middlesex Moving with assistance from Blasting School of Planning. The results will be compiled to help us apply for another round of Safe Routes to School Grants, which are due at the end of June. We'll keep you posted on that. Also this evening, I'm delighted to let everybody know about a new project we're looking into for a solar array. We have a sizable lot, which had historically been used for debris, and we'd like to lease this out to a company or utility to produce solar power and possibly resiliency for our Public Works building. This will be a cash-positive project with a multi-year lease, with all design, install, et cetera, costs to be paid by the provider. This project fully supports our sustainability initiatives and environmental concerns. Tonight, we'll be voting on a resolution to go out for bid for the project. And lastly, I'd like to thank Mrs. Burkhardt for speaking to us today. I know it's not always easy for survivors to share their stories, but they are important stories, and future generations want desperately to hear them. It's important for younger generations to hear firsthand, or as close to firsthand as possible, of survivors' experiences, as there are so few survivors still with us today. Their stories are a reminder of our history and help us decide our future. Thank you again.
Borough Administrator, do you have a report?
No report, Mayor.
Okay, Borough Attorney, do you have a report?
No report, Madam Mayor.
All right, I just have a few things. I, too, would like to thank our Main Street Organization and everyone that made the rainy street fair a success. There were close to 400 runners participating in the 5K. Councilman, do you know how many years we've been running this 5K?
I want to say over 15 years, Mayor. It's not as long as the street fair, but close to it. But I didn't have a chance to check on some history for my report, because I also wanted to get some of the counts as well. We can get that, I'd like to put it in my report for the EUs.
Okay, very good. It's wonderful to me to see how many people who actually show up for our 5K, whether they're running or walking, whether they're five years old or 65 years old. You all know that it's very important to me that we live a healthy lifestyle, and that's the kind of event that really shows the rest of the community how committed we all are to healthy living. So again, my thanks to the Main Street Organization for making that happen. I also want to mention the HeartSafe Community Status. It's another first for us here in Highland Park. We were New Jersey's first green community, and now we are New Jersey's first heart-safe community. It really was an interesting program last night, and I was delighted to hear that Dr. Cliff Lacy is going to be extending the program at his upcoming Mayor's Wellness Campaign Committee meetings, to which the public will be invited, so that one of Highland Park's at least five resident cardiologists will be able to answer questions about heart safety and cardiological questions. There were quite a few questions at last night's event, most of them pertaining to the difference between heart attack symptoms in men and women and children. So I urge you to keep your eyes peeled for the next meeting of the Mayor's Wellness Campaign, and please come and join us. This last week, I had the opportunity to meet with the team that is working on Rutgers University's Rutgers 2030 program, and I was delighted to see that they've included Highland Park, along with New Brunswick and Piscataway and Edison, in their plans for transportation going forward. So we'll continue meeting with them. I was encouraged by hearing that they, too, feel it's important for us to have some sort of connection, transportation connection, between Highland Park and Rutgers University. So I will keep you posted on all of that. And that's all I have. Any public discussion? Mr. Gross, please come up to the microphones, that your name and address.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Herb Gross, and I live at Adelaide Gardens. Madam Mayor, for the past couple of meetings, I've requested you and every member of this council to put a ban on anyone bringing a laptop machine into this meeting. Tonight, I'm demanding a vote, I would like a vote, from each and every member of the council, yourself, to ban laptop machines from entering this meeting. I am not talking about cell phones or smartphones.
Mr. Gross, thank you for changing your terminology from demanding to asking. It's a much nicer way to speak to us.
You have to speak up, I could just about hear you here.
Can everyone hear me? Thank you. I want to say I thank you for changing your terminology. I want to say I thank you for changing your terminology from demanding to asking for something. That's very polite of you. I appreciate that. You did mention it at the last council meeting, and the council will be discussing it on our conference agenda later today. Thank you.
Are you saying, Madam Mayor, that, again, this is the third time now, that you said that you're going to take it up with the council again?
So, Mr. Gross, the way the law works...
I know how the law works on this.
Okay. Please don't interrupt me. The way the law works is that you have to notice anything that you are going to address on an agenda 48 hours ahead of time. So, while you brought it up last week, it is now on an agenda for us to discuss on the next conference agenda. Thank you very much, and it will be discussed.
I'll be waiting for an answer, but I'm not going to keep requesting the same proposal.
Well, that's good to hear. Thank you.
I don't know about "thank you."
Any other public discussion? Yes, please come up. Please state your name and address.
My name is Max Wazatsky. I live on 54 North Seventh Avenue.
Mr. Wazatsky, could you please speak a little louder or closer to the microphone?
Is this better?
Can everyone hear?
Is this better?
No, people cannot hear you. Can it come up?
Hello?
You're taller. Maybe if you raise it a little, can it come up? Or take it out of its stand? There.
Hello? Is this better?
Better, everybody?
My name is Max Wazatsky. I live on 54 North Seventh Avenue. I've been living in our house for about 50 years now. I have comments for, I guess should be addressed to the Shade Tree Commission. I'm not sure who's responsible, but...
So, that would be Council President Wolkowitz.
So, we'll get this done. My comments are this. We have trees. I said I've been in my house for 50 years now. The original trees that were there when we moved in died, never cut down, and new trees were put in. So, what I'm referring to now, our trees are about maybe 30 years old, or something like that. The trees are fine when they're put in, and I have obviously no problem with the trees per se. My problem is that the trees, as they grow, the roots start growing out. They've overgrown parts of my front lawn and also the sidewalk, not just the sidewalk, but the front walk leading up to my steps. And the foliage, the branches and the leaves, especially the weathered leaves, when they get wet, they start hanging down. They grow pretty large. They overhang the front walk, the sidewalks, the driveways, the streets, the cars, and right now, they're actually starting to overhang the gutters in my house. So, the comment that I have is that I wonder how much thought, or maybe more thought should be given, when the Shade Tree Commission's put in these trees, what they, if they think ahead and what these trees are going to look like after 20 or 30 or 40 years, and what potential damage they could be doing. Now, I understand, from what I understand, the trees don't belong to me. I don't, you know, we don't put them in or take them out, but yet, we're responsible for whatever happens. So, I'd like to request that there's some real good thought to be given to what the trees are going to look like after 20, 30, 40 years, whatever. Okay?
Thank you. That's a great question and comments. Right now, I've known the members on our Shade Tree Commission now for the past few years, and they are extremely hardworking. Every single tree that's planted, they choose the species. In fact, they go to the nursery and hand-pick it to make sure it is exactly the species that they wanted and that it is in good shape. We've put together a list of trees that are available on our website, the ones that we are planting and the ones that we prefer. So, if a homeowner requests a tree on Borough property but in front of their house, it has to be one of the trees that are on that list. So, they really are trying to get away from what may have been planted a while ago that may have been inappropriate. These are, I believe that they're smaller. I've seen a lot of them that have been planted more recently in the past few years, and that is the goal. They're also not planting things like trees with big nuts, so that, you know, the nuts fall, you don't slip on the sidewalk with that. So, all those kinds of things, they do take into consideration, as well as, are they more of an eastern, mid-Atlantic species, so that normal watering and drought tolerance would work and that the tree would actually thrive here? Because when we do get the trees, you know, we're not getting a little twig sample. We're getting a tree that's several years old. It's wrapped in burlap. It's put in a well-dug-out ditch and properly planted, and so, you know, the trees are expensive when we purchase them. And by the way, they come from a separate tree fund, so they're not, taxpayer money is not used on this. Just want to make that clear. But it's important for us to have the trees. I would hope that the tree does provide you with some of the things that I mentioned earlier in my notes. If you think that this tree needs pruning, please give us a call, or I can, if you want to leave me your information again.
Does the Tree Commission prune the trees?
Well, the Tree Commission is available to come out and look at a site, but yes, we prune trees. So, if you can give me your contact information, I didn't catch, I know you said North Seventh Avenue, but...
54.
54? We'll get somebody out there to look at the tree this week.
Okay, great. I didn't realize they did that.
Absolutely. You know, we can't always notice every tree that needs to be pruned, so if there are ones in people's properties that you feel need, you know, need to get pruned, please let us know if we didn't catch it yet. And I'm going to say that it goes on a list only because the Borough staff, the crew, the Public Works crew, they have certain equipment, and they could trim a certain amount of a tree. If it's something larger, we have to call the arborist. If it's something even larger than that, if it's a tree removal, they bring out other trucks. If it's a tree stump that has to get ground, that's, again, other equipment. So, things do tend to go on a list, but that's just to make the job a little bit more efficient. So, we'll send somebody out to take a look.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Please come up to the microphone and state your name and address.
I need to sign the document.
It's very flexible.
Okay. My name is Jackie Zinberg.
Can you all hear?
No? Oh, wow. I have to get a kid in here, and then I'll yell, okay? One of my kids, okay? My name is Jackie Zinberg. I used to have a house on Insa Street, and now I live in an apartment on 239 South Sixth Street. First of all, I'm really amazed at how much effort you go to when you're choosing the trees. It's really amazing. I do want to point out one thing that I think he was saying, but he didn't really make it clear. There are different kinds of root systems for trees. There's a deep one. It's called a taproot, and mostly, it just goes down. I don't know down to what. There are pipes and sewers and whatever there as well. The ones that spread out, and what he's talking about when they're going close to the sidewalk, what they do is lift up squares of these huge, huge, I don't know what, foot-thick pieces of cement. It's really incredible. And then what happens to these disparate squares is that people like I fall on them. And I have fallen a number of times. I'm just not the kind of person who comes and says, "Yo, I got hurt." I don't do it. Maybe I should, but I am telling you, it is roots going under sidewalk squares, lifting them up, creating this disparity that cannot always be seen. And, you know, things like snow, forget it. Things like rain, I just don't have the ability to see it soon enough and not slip. So, I'm asking you to please pay attention to what type of roots these trees grow. All those other things matter, too. I appreciate it. And I just wanted to ask about one other thing. What is happening with the library in Highland Park?
Okay. I'll be happy to talk about that. There's nothing going on with the library in Highland Park at this point. One of the things that we have identified for the benefit of the financial future of the municipality is downtown development. There is a possible developer who may want to build on Raritan Avenue, and the library itself, the board and the members of the library have identified the need for expansion in some way. At this point, there's nothing really going on. The only things that we've been looking at are possible developments. If anything becomes more real, we'll certainly go forward to the community and here, get input and show you what's being planned. But the Redevelopment Agency has discussed this in public, open public meetings, which you're always welcome to attend, as Councilman Phil George, who is the liaison to the Redevelopment Agency, mentioned these meetings. You should come to meetings if you're concerned about things. That's where you get to talk about what's on your mind, and it is also where you get to hear the truth about what is really happening.
That's great.
Right now, anything that might involve the library is just a dream.
Well, can I just please say one more thing? First of all, I don't have transportation, so is it here, these meetings? Are they here? Okay, fine. I can do that.
Yeah.
These boards that you're talking about?
Oh, the meetings. Yeah, yeah, yeah. They're here. They're here.
The Redevelopment Agency meets...
Where?
No, they meet here.
They're here.
Redevelopment meets here.
They're usually here, though.
Beautiful. Okay.
On the first Thursday normally. Ma'am, Redevelopment usually meets on the first Thursday. Sometimes, because of scheduling, it's the second Thursday. They're 7:30 right here in this office, in this room, right here.
Okay. Just one thing I want to say, because I'm afraid that health issues might keep me from coming, and once it's been decided, it doesn't matter what anyone thinks.
So, we're a very open and transparent group here.
I know.
And so, when and if the Redevelopment Agency is ready to approve something or move forward with something, there will be an open public meeting that will be very, very well communicated.
Yes.
So, I'm sure you would hear about it.
Okay. And it won't be too late for that to be vetoed?
No.
Okay. Thank you so much, everybody.
Thank you. Any other... Okay. Mrs. Bickhardt, are you ready now?
No, I want to talk about the trees.
Please state your name and address.
Mrs. Bickhardt, 307 Magnolia. First of all, a tree was planted on my property about 15 or so years before I was living here, because I owned the property, and I didn't respond when they sent me the notice that I could choose. And I figured no answer is a very clear answer. I don't want one. The tree was there. They told me it wouldn't take it down. I then fed the tree, so that it at least grew healthy and deep roots. But I resent all the trees that are big and ancient, and the people don't rake the leaves, and I have to trudge through those. I think if you're going to plant trees, you need to have an ordinance about cleaning your sidewalk and cleaning the trees off your lawn. Until two weeks ago, when my lawnmower guy came, there were still leaves from the property next door, and there was nothing on my property. I have a pithsle tree that, you know, tiny little leaves. So, I suggest you bring that on.
Okay. Is there any other public discussion at this point? Okay. Seeing none, we will move ahead. Clerk, would you report on advertising the Resolution 416-138, amendments to the 2016 municipal budget and water and sewer budget?
The 2016 Highland Park Municipal Budget was introduced and approved on first reading on March 15, 2016. The public hearing was held on April 19. The budget was amended on April 19 and was duly advertised in the home news on April 22, 2016.
Okay. May I have a motion to take up the amendment on final reading?
So moved.
Second.
Any public hearing on this? Okay. 516-152, resolution to adopt 2016 municipal and water and sewer budget as amended on final reading by title. Motion to adopt or reject.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilman Erickson?
Yes.
Councilman Fine?
Yes.
Councilman George?
Yes.
Councilman Walsh?
Yes.
Councilwoman Wolkowitz?
Clerk, would you report on advertising the e-cigarette licensing ordinance for consideration of passage on final reading by title?
I don't need to, if you're going to table it.
May I have a motion to table this discussion?
So moved.
Second.
Until May 17th, our next meeting.
Okay. Until the May 17th meeting.
Accepted.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Did everybody vote? Okay. Okay. We're moving along to the consent agenda. May I have a roll call vote on the following resolutions, 516-154 through 516-161?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilman Erickson?
Yes.
Councilman Fine?
Yes.
Councilman George?
Yes.
Councilman Walsh?
Yes.
Councilwoman Wolkowitz?
Yes.
Any public discussion? Mrs. Bickhardt? We're hoping that you'll be able to talk with us now. Thank you. You will need the microphone.
Yes. Do you mind if I sit down?
Not at all. And is that microphone working?
I don't know if that one is, but we can give her that one.
Okay. We'll give that to you. And Joan, would you turn the chair around so she could be facing Gary? Do we...
You can verify most of what I'm going to tell you in this book. It's called "To Hope and Back," and it comes from the Highland Park Library. I lent my copies out, and they haven't returned. And then, I have one from the Holocaust Museum. I made notes, and my mind keeps wandering. Okay. All right. The St. Louis was a ship that we sailed on, and I'm sure it was specifically planned that it would sail on a Saturday, because it's the holy day for the Jews. So, we arrived in Hamburg on Friday, spent a night in a hotel, and then the next day, I don't know whether my mother called a cab or whether the steamship company made arrangements, because there were other people who were going on the ship as well. We got a surprise visitor, a friend of my father's, that we didn't know was coming to see us off in Hamburg, because where we lived in Breslau was a, I don't know, six, eight-hour journey. And he slept in the bathtub through the night, and he had brought us roller skates. There was my mother, brother, and I. So, for my brother and me, the old-fashioned clip-on with a key, roller skates. That was going to be our entertainment on the ship. We boarded the ship sometime in the late Saturday morning, and there was another woman on the ship who was traveling with a daughter, a year younger than myself, and my mother, when we were seated with the dinner hour... And my mother, when we were seated with the dinner hour together, my mother quickly learned that this woman was not Jewish. And whoever hears this, please, we are not bigots. This was just... I don't know how, I can't think of the right word to explain this, but we were the oppressed ones, and of all the people on the ship, my mother felt, she didn't merit this. There should have been some other Jewish woman who could empathize with her being alone on the ship with the two children. I was 10, my brother was 11, and this girl of nine and the mother. That turned out to be the blessing of the journey, and she became an integral part of our life until she passed away. And this past Sunday, I had the joy, and there's no other way to describe it, of having her grandchildren coming to have lunch with me and sharing some of the memories that they knew that their mother had passed on, their grandmother had died. The girl barely knew the grandmother, she was an infant when the grandmother passed away. So, but they were a very closely knit family. How she played the role in the end, I'll tell you in a little while. So we were seated together in the dining room. This was a luxury ship, and service and everything was deluxe. I'm having some trouble seeing, so give me one moment. Okay, my mother became seasick almost as soon as the boat started to juggle on the water. What am I... And we didn't know what to do for our mother. And this woman, I will give you, her name is Ani. She was a dentist, her father was a dentist, and her husband was a physician. So she had a medical background. And the medication that the ship doctor prescribed did not agree with my mother. So she became the custodian, the caregiver, the nurse. She spent all her time with my mother, and after two or three days, we switched. The daughter came to sleep with us, and the two women stayed together because Ani was concerned about the medication that was being administered, that she might not survive this journey. And we kids were pretty much alone during the day. We went roller skating, we drove the people nuts, but we also had access to the other recreational facilities. We went swimming, and we played some games, we played jacks and wrote down... We basically had a good time on the journey, and the weather was invariably good. We made one stop in France, and I think we stopped where some people came on board, and another family boarded in Belgium. And we found out coincidentally that they had at one time lived in our town, and that their older son and my brother had been in the same Jewish school together. And they were going to the States to reunite with her husband, who had been able to get out sometime earlier in '38. And she had the same as fortune that we had. She also went back and subsequently was able to get out a second time because we saw each other in New York when we got there. She got out earlier than we did. Let's see. Well, then we came to Cuba. We arrived early morning to the sunrise. I remember it was a beautiful trip, and we were all packed up and ready to disembark. And we waited, they gave us a light breakfast because we were supposed to have been off the boat by 8 o'clock. But nobody was going anywhere, and my mother, who was very shaky on her feet because it was the first time she was out of bed and walking around, and they just said there seemed to be some problems, but they're working these things out. And then a little boat started to appear on the side of the ship, and family members, there's husbands variably, were coming, looking for family members on the ship because that was the only way that they could communicate. And lo and behold, some, nothing for disembarkment, there were about 20 people who had the necessary documents that suddenly they said you needed. I don't remember what the papers were, but there were about 20 people who had those, and they were allowed to disembark, and the rest of us were stuck. And then all of a sudden, we saw a little boat in which my father showed up, and there were some other people on there. So, you know, we could wave to each other and could yell to each other, but that was about as close a contact as we could have. And then he found out, my father found out, that we had met this woman, and it turned out that he lived in the same rooming house as my father. So they became acquainted, and they bonded. And for the next few days, while we were lying in Havana Harbor, they would come together. And long and short of it is, the politics in Havana, there was nothing we could do about it. They wanted money that nobody wanted to raise, and the American government didn't want to support that, and the Jewish community in America couldn't raise the enormous amount. I just read the other day that in 1939, the amount came to about $125,000. And I think they came up with about $15,000, which was a large sum of money for that time anyway. So, the captain was ordered to pull out of Cuban waters, and he sailed towards Florida in the hope that the Jewish organizations in New York would be able to convince Roosevelt to allow us to come in. And we were that close to Florida that we could count the cars that were driving along the waterway there. But that only lasted for a couple of days, and then we had to pull out as well. And while we were slowly moving out, and as children, we weren't very perturbed about this. We, you know, we felt secure. There was nothing we could do anyway, and nobody was talking about danger. Nobody could envision what ultimately would come out of, what the Germans had really planned. So, a couple of days after, when we finally told that we had to go back to Europe, or towards Europe, then my mother told us that the captain had issued orders to inquire, I think Belgium was the first country that offered hospitality, if there were other European countries that would share. And so, people had to indicate if they had family or friends or any preferences, where they would want to go. Now, it turned out that my father had cousins that had been in London already from the early '30s, maybe before Hitler came to, soon after Hitler came to power in the '20s. And so she had actually expressed preference for England, and a second choice, France, because she spoke French fluently. Both Ani and my mother spoke French fluently. That was the language that educated people spoke. And so we ended up in France. The boat went to Antwerp, and from there we disembarked, and we were then allocated to smaller ships to take us to our destination. And so we came to France, and we were put on a train. And I can't tell you the exact way that we traveled, but I know that the town that we ended up in was called Laval on the river Mayenne. And if you look on a map, it's there. So it's northwestern part of France. It's a very little village. We got there at the end of June, and we were put up in an inn. They had some boarding facilities, they had a restaurant there, and there would be a county, not a county fair, you know, a farmer's market thing where the people came to town once a week to sell their farm goods or their wares, whatever they had, and they would do that at this particular inn. Alcohol was heavily consumed, and there was frequent aggression, especially between the inn owner and his wife. And when two civilized women came to stay there, she felt a little bit more secure and protected. And she very quickly, since both women spoke French fluently, she became, you know, attached to them, and they were empathetic to her needs as well and respectful of them. And when she explained that she couldn't eat this and she couldn't eat that, she gave them a pot and told them that certain times she could come into the kitchen and they could make whatever they wanted to eat. So, it was hard to keep a kosher diet, but we didn't have to eat the, what did they have? Pigs and, what are the little things that jump around? Rabbit. I was going to say ducks, but they waddled. And we could go to the market and buy fruits and vegetables, whatever fresher that we wanted to do. And then came unfortunately, oh, and my brother was, ended up in France, in Paris, at a Jewish boarding school. So it was just the two mothers and two girls, and we got along fine, and I have some pictures, I'll show you that if you want to afterwards. And then the war broke out. And about two weeks before, towards the latter part of August, suddenly three women appeared. They spoke German, and they told us that they had come from Spain and that they had some connection to the Spanish Civil War in the mid, late '30s. And I don't know why, their French wasn't very good. But they had been in France during that period, so they came back to where they were, and they were also housed with us. And so one of the women who spoke German very well, my mother asked her if she would go to Paris to pick up my brother and bring him back, which she did. So by September the 2nd, my brother was back with us as well. And then we were pretty much under house arrest because legally we couldn't wander around. And one of the things I do remember is that the chief rabbi of France, or of Paris, issued to refugees, there were lots of refugees in France already at that time, is that survival was of the highest priority, and that included eating what's available to you. And don't starve because you're keeping kashrut, so that you don't have to eat the pork, but you can eat the vegetables, you can eat all the other things. You don't have to, you have to stay healthy and well. And we did. A day or two after we had gotten to the inn, the owners had also a girl, a daughter in our age bracket, and there was a courtyard, and Mary Ann and I were in the courtyard, and suddenly the innkeeper's wife came to me specifically and asked, motioned upstairs where the mothers were taking an afternoon nap. She said, "Maman, maman," telling me, "Your mother should come down. There's a man here who wants to see her." Well, at that point, I had become sufficiently protective to know my mother was Jewish, Mary Ann's mother was not. So Mary Ann's mother is going to be maman. And I turned to her and I said, "Go tell your mother to come down." And Ani came down and met this gentleman, and he told her, looked at her, stared at her, "What do you want from me?" And then said, "I was told the Jews have horns, and I wanted to see that." And she burst out laughing and told me to go upstairs and tell my mother to come down, that this was a perfectly legitimate request to come down. And I didn't know why, but my mother came down, and then they both laughed. And he became our protector, our benefactor for the remainder of the time that we were in Paris, or in France. He had a larger estate and a beautiful garden. He had a gardener who planted fruits and vegetables, there were fruit trees, and there were vegetables growing, and we were free to pick and to take what we wanted. And they set aside a place in the kitchen if my mother wanted to cook something for us, she was free to do so. And the chauffeur would pick us up in the morning, we could spend the day there, and then in the late afternoon or evening would take us back. And he remained on that level with us until the day that we left Laval to go back to La Rive, where we were going to catch the boat, to go back towards America. And then we spent a night on the train, traveling, and this is particularly for the American public what I'm going to tell you. We were strong, it was a beautiful day. They had seen a sign somewhere that there was a movie playing. What's the name of the child actress?
Shirley.
Shirley Temple, thank you. My memory is terrible. Shirley Temple. We'd never been to a movie theater before, that just wasn't done in those days. And so Ani and her daughter and my brother were looking for the movie theater where that was playing, and I was walking my mother along this road, following them but a distance behind. And suddenly, a tall person, a tall man, 10-year-old, everybody was taller than me, right, was walking towards us, a person of color. I had never seen this. Frankly, I didn't even know that such a thing existed because of the sheltered life we had lived. And I stared at this person, and I turned, and I said to my mother, "Did you see..." And my mother was yanking, "Mom, turn around, it's rude to stare at people." And I said, "Did you see this?" And her answer was, "God made all kinds of people. Those are the chocolate people, and we're the vanilla people." I can still hear her words in my ear. I raised my children with that, and I have told that, hopefully with the same impression it had on me, to hundreds of other people. Bigotry is not part of our lifestyle. We don't judge people by their outer appearance, we judge them by their behavior. And this man just walked on. We never got to the movie theater because there was an eerie siren right after that, and we had to find shelter. And by the time the siren, you know, had given us the relief, the thought of the movie had already passed us, and then it got time to board the ship. It was December, so daylight was over very shortly. We must have boarded the ship somewhere maybe around between 2 and 3 o'clock in the afternoon until we were settled. And this was a commercial ship. The middle of it was an empty, like a tank, that's where the merchandise would go in. And then there were cabins, there were altogether about 200 people, that included the crew, and we were all below deck because the seas were very rough. And we sailed late in the day, first to England, and then slowly out into American waters. And somewhere along the way, we noticed, and my mother was seasick the whole time, and there was a life-threatening thing, that Ani was, again, with my mother, and the three children were together in the next cabin. And that doctor didn't seem to like the idea of having refugees. And that doctor didn't seem to like the idea of having refugees on the ship, and gave some medication that would have done her in. And Ani immediately picked up on that and disposed of it, and my mother survived and very, very sick. And we ended up in New York on Ellis Island. And we spent a few days there, waiting for our ship. My father had made arrangements for us. He didn't know what day we were going to arrive. And then from New York to Havana, it was two days by boat. Ani and Mary Ann had to stay behind because she had picked up some infection, so she couldn't leave right away. And my parents were blessed to arrive in Havana on their wedding anniversary day. So that ended well. And then Ani and Mary Ann showed up a few days later. We lived in the same apartment in Cuba, in Havana. I loved every day that I was there. I have nothing but nice things to say about the Cuban people. And I hear from people who are visiting now that they haven't changed for the worse, so it should be good. And we spent a year and two weeks in Cuba. We shared this apartment not only with Ani, her husband, and daughter, but with my aunt and uncle, who joined us in between. It was a two-bedroom apartment, but we had plenty of room for anything and everything. And we were the last to leave. And we arrived in New York, February, the 2nd of February, on a Sunday. And on Monday morning, my father registers in school in New York City. And we spent, what, six months in New York. And during that time, my brother became a newspaper carrier and threw the papers and earned enough money to buy a bicycle. And I was sent to a camp in Maine called Sky Farm Camp. And I still have the jewelry box that I made for myself while I was there. And my mother became a home care for women who had babies, and like a home health aide kind of thing. She was a doctoral candidate at the university, but she also had a teacher's license. And some first aid and health skills were part of her training to become a teacher. So she supported the family. We had an apartment in New York for the few months we were there. And my father went on a training farm. He had to choose between dairy farming in Connecticut and chicken farming in South Jersey. The chickens won out. Sometime, the latter part of October of 1941, we moved to Vineland. And a new chapter in our life began. That was my adventures on the St. Louis. The person that I am today, I owe to my parents. And I think my grandson is here with me. Some of the things that I was raised with, I tried to emulate on my children, but it didn't go beyond the next generation because there was another partner in the family relationship who didn't have the same life experiences. So, that's it. The adventures of St. Louis. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Bickhardt. That was wonderful to hear that history that you lived through. As I said before, I see you around town all the time. I see you here every two weeks. I never knew this about you, and I'm delighted that you were able to share this with us.
If you want to see, this is my mother and what we looked like at about the time that we left. And this is the gentleman that had the estate. This is Ani. This is my mother. This is Mary Ann, and this is me.
Yeah, I want to see.
Anyone here?
Oh, absolutely. I'll leave you here. And this is her, a bride, Mary Ann's bride, with her parents. Any questions, anybody? No, this is Mary Ann, and this is me. And my mother had a brother.
Do you remember what date you got to leave France? Or approximately, if not exactly?
August, December the 20th.
That you left France?
Yes.
Of 19...
1939. We spent, what, three or six months there.
When did the Germans come to occupy France?
Maybe '40?
No, we were there.
Yeah, we got out and then they took us.
Okay. So anyone who wants to look at Mrs. Bickhardt's pictures or ask her questions, she'll be here. In the interim, may I have a motion to adjourn to conference meeting?
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Meeting is adjourned.